Julie Nealon to get ahold of you. Okay.
Yep.
She reached out to me about getting on the agenda.
February.
Okay.
Yep.
Home show.
Yep. The vendor social.
Yeah. Yeah.
He's better on the country than you.
Morning Harley.
Good morning, good morning. Beautiful day out today.
All right, good morning. It is nine AM. We'll go ahead and call the meeting of the Cottington County Board of Commissioners to order for this Tuesday, January twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. All commission members are present and accounted for. Commissioner Gable, it should be noted that Commissioner Gable will be live streaming on the Zoom feed, so he is in attendance this morning as well. So let's go ahead and rise and do the Pledge of Allegiance and Commissioner Johnson, will you lead us this morning?
And Julie, the Republic, which is hands. One nation, they are individual. Whatever the injustice.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Johnson. A call for public comment. Public comment may be submitted in person or via telephone at six oh five eight eight two six two four eight. Or six oh five eight eight two six two nine seven. We will take those comments on those phone lines if you have a public comment during our public comment section of the meeting. Item number three. Well, before we get to that, please silence your cell phones. So if they do not disrupt the meeting, thank you very much. Item number three, does any commissioners have any conflict of interest items in regards to today's meeting?
No. No.
No.
Okay, number four, action to approve the January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three agenda. Look for motion.
So moved.
Moved by Gable, second by Schwer. Any discussion on that item? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number five, action to approve the January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three minutes of the Board of the Cottington County Commission. Moved by Johnson.
Okay.
Second by Waterman. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number six, it's an annual report from Todd Kayes. He's the executive director. He's not present. We'll come back to that. We'll give him a few minutes to show up. So let's go ahead and move on to item number seven. Which is the report, monthly report from emergency management. Morning Andrew.
You know, as I started to throw this together, it's like you're gonna be at a slow month. And when I started looking back at some of the checklist and there was actually stuff to to talk about. So we recently received the sub recipient agreement for DR four six five six, which was the derecho. Their way or I need to sign one sheet. I just had a couple of things to touch base with with Cindy and I signed it. So that'll go back. The funds are ready to be distributed. And then we have the final meeting, which is the recovery transition meeting scheduled for Thursday.
How many, how much funds are going to be reimbursed? Do we know?
Um.
That total ones?
It was seven thousand.
Okay.
Pretty much. But yeah.
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 Okay.
Our insurance company covered. A lot of the tree damage.
Okay.
We did receive. Yep. Let's argue that.
All right.
So. And the PDM, it's pending adoption for final approval. So like once the county adopts it and each of the communities within the county adopt the PDM plan, FEMA is ready to approve it. And then I received an invitation to serve on Clark County's planning team just yesterday. On the thirteenth, we had a community partners meeting. That was one that Brenda Hampton kind of started during COVID when she was the chair with a lot of the smaller communities. The Secretary of Health for South Dakota, Melissa Magstead spoke at that discussing primarily COVID, you know, with the new variant that was out influenza and RSV. She said that, you know, we're starting to see a new variant about every three months. Every day, there's about seventy new diagnosed cases of COVID in South Dakota. And it's been holding fairly steady with about fifty hospitalized and that's statewide. I mean, the symptoms mostly the same as what we were seeing initially. The one thing that they are seeing a lot less of is the loss of taste and smell. The largest part of our discussion was on influenza. And as of that date, there was about sixteen hundred cases more diagnosed this flu season than all of last flu season. And we kind of went into some discussions on that and I mean, there's typically two waves. Fall waves usually influenza A, spring waves usually influenza B, or the second wave is influenza B. Really, like we can't, like I asked question like, hey, can we predict how the second wave is going to act, you know, like based on how the first wave went and we can't so. I mean, hopefully, you know, we're past the worst of this flu season, but I mean, it kind of remains to be seen. A little bit of an interesting thing was that nationally, the predominant strain has been H three, but more locally, it's been more H one N one strain. Oh, and another thing about the second wave, last year nationally, they had one, but locally, we did not see a second wave. So. Talked about RSV. I mean, it was pretty common November and early December. Those spiked pretty quick this year. We kind of talked a little bit about how tree symptoms on and manage manage the symptoms because there's not really a a treatment for it. And then she went on to talk about what the state's doing to help some of the smaller ambulance services. We submitted our quarterly report for the LMPG, had some hazmat classes and those are the ones that are covered with the HMEP or the hazardous materials emergency preparedness grant. And then scheduled hazmat and CPRs for search and rescue and volunteer fire departments. Planning P workshop, we had scheduled for February fifteenth initially, but that's not going to work anymore. There was a pretty major scheduling conflict, so we're working on trying to get that rescheduled. As far as the drought monitor, surprisingly, we're still like showing up as being in either D zero or D one. Actually, that first part that was in the D one last year, like up in the far northwest part of the county. That's actually D zero and the rest of the county is D one right now. It was the sixth wettest December on record in the last hundred twenty-eight years, however, and they are anticipating that we're going to drop off of that drought monitor here pretty soon. No longer be in a drought. We had a search and rescue banquet. There were several members that were recognized. I just kind of want to mention them here. So Tim Wait and John Lundgren have been members for five years. Wally Walford has been a member for ten years. DJ York and Dr. Clark Legness, twenty years, and Ken Nig, twenty-five years. And Greg McDonald was recognized for the Esprit Decor Awards. Right. We couldn't do, I mean, that team is amazing. I mean, everything that they do, sacrifices that they make. Like I appreciate all of them and it's really amazing what they've accomplished far before I arrived. So.
Yeah, it's truly amazing what that team does and it's a group of volunteers that dedicate their time and efforts and skills to making sure that we're protected. We appreciate their work. I guess the only question I have, you mentioned, there's a lot of acronyms in your report here this morning, so I just want to make sure the public's clear if they're listening to PDM, the pre disaster.
Oh, yes.
Pre-disaster mitigation plan. Can you explain that a little bit? So people know what that is?
Yes, so.
Or how often it's updated and.
I mean, it's it's planned that is updated every five years. The last one was valid from two thousand and seventeen or was adopted in two thousand and seventeen and ran through two thousand and twenty-two. What it does is it assesses vulnerabilities that our community has. So so what we perceive our vulnerabilities are, for example, I mean, like, we don't need to take protection measures to protect against landslides, for example. However, I mean, we may want to take mitigation measures to protect against flooding. So so we look at the hazards first and then try to think of ways to mitigate or lessen the impacts of those hazards that we may face. And that's, you know, that can be done by, you know, improving irrigation or possibly installing, you know, pump stations for, you know, rural water systems, different things like that, just to make sure that like when when hazards strike that are likely to strike that that we're like trying to lessen the impact of those of us that we can.
And it's a, it's a group of community members and I sit on that team as well that have have looked at that pre-disaster mitigation plan and have put that together as we move it forward. So it's something we have to do and and a lot of work for sure. So we appreciate it. So thank you very much. Anything else? Any commissioners? Do you have anything for?
I had a question.
Yep, thank you.
Commissioner.
So Andrew, you mentioned that we had sixteen hundred more flu cases than this time last year. So what sixteen hundred on top of what?
I'm sorry.
Just I have an overall idea of what we're talking about.
Right. So and and she was referring to statewide. So she she was saying that as of our meeting, which was February or correction, January thirteenth, statewide, we had one thousand six hundred more flu cases this year than we had all of last year.
Although, so that was statewide. Okay, I was that was county. Okay. And just to piggyback on what what Commissioner Van Duzen said about the search and rescue team, I just remember, you know, just so the public's aware, these are, we get such a good deal out of these guys as a county. So their their volunteer work is really priceless. I remember being a candidate and just kind of studying up and learning about that. And I was, I was truly amazed. That really the county pays for the workman's comp insurance. We pay for some of the training and some of the equipment, but you know, it's it's extremely valuable what what that team does. And so I appreciate what they do.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Andrew. Commissioner Gable, I'm going to disconnect our connection here on your end of the phone.
Okay.
There we go. Okay. All right, I see Todd Kayes from his executive director, first district association of local governments has joined us now. Let's move back to item number six and Todd, good morning.
Morning, Lee. Oh, geez, I got stuck in the phone call and slow traffic getting bigger this morning. I'll give this.
It is rush hour, so.
Give this to Lee when he gets in. So, um, hi, Lee.
Hey, Todd. Did I miss an email of the PDF, did I?
Todd, can I?
I will, I will give a copy. I'm just going to talk off the lead. I'm sorry.
Want me to scan it now?
It's, don't worry about it.
Okay.
So, good morning, everyone. As you.
Hi, Randy.
Yeah.
Yes.
Nice to meet you, Todd.
Um. As many of you are aware, and this is probably be more for Randy's information than anyone's, but and the general public's. Periodically, every year I try to hit all of our city county commissions in the first quarter to talk. We didn't get together in two thousand and twenty due to COVID and in two thousand and twenty-one. We ended up actually having a meeting and I think it was about September. And so we didn't meet in twenty-two and so now here we are in two thousand and twenty-three and just want to give a brief overview of who the planning district is, what we do for our members and what we've been doing with Cottonton County for the last fifty-one years. So First District is one of six regional planning and development districts located across the state. We have sister offices in Rapid City and Pier and Sioux Falls and Yankton and Aberdeen. And we represent eleven counties and seventy-six communities from Roberts down to Moody over to Minor and back up to Clark. And we're not government, but we're creatures of government. We were established in nineteen seventy-one by Governor Frank Farrar through executive order. And our mission then still pretty much rings true today. We were created created to provide technical assistance to local units of government to promote community and economic development that worked to promote the quality of life throughout the region. As far as how we are governed, we have a thirty-five member governing body that's known as the governing body and they meet two to three times a year. Their general purpose is to provide approve of our work plan, approve our budget, hire the district on an annual basis and be a sounding board for work activities that are being conducted within the district. Currently, the the makeup of the board is, Myron was just recently appointed, my understanding. He took over Brenda Hampton, who had been on our board for many years and was the chair of our board. Glenn Vilhauer is the municipal rep here in Cottington County, and we currently have a vacancy. And I know you can't act on it today, but I'm going to ask you as the county commission to appoint an at-large member. And I've discussed it with Michelle with Wiretown Development Company. Historically, the chair or the executive director of the Wiretown Development Company has sat on our board. And after Chris Shilken left and then there was a little bit of vacancy and then Mark Vaughn, we haven't had an at-large member for over a year on on the on the first district board. And so at your next meeting, Cindy, if we could get that on an agendized item to appoint Michelle, I'd be very much appreciative unless you guys have somebody else that you would like to have on your board that's completely your own druthers there. It's called the at-large, at-large position. And I have talked that over with Glenn Vilhauer, your municipal rep, and he was in favor of that. We had talked about that in the past. As far as how we're funded, we have basically three streams of revenue that come into our office. All of the counties and all of the communities with a population of more than a hundred paid dues into our organization, that represents about about twenty percent in two thousand and twenty-three, but that's usually twenty to twenty-two percent of our operating revenue. And then we use those dues to leverage other state and federal grants. And then we also conduct some state and federal contract work to the tune of about another twenty-one, twenty-two percent. But in two thousand and twenty-three, a lion's share, close to fifty-nine percent of our operating revenue comes in fee for service work. And that fee for service work is done for our memberships at rates than what you would find less in the private sector. And that's just through the power of the collective. We might be using money from Henry and South Shore to do a project in Carthage and vice versa. And that's how we're able to keep our rates down and steady over the years. As far as our staff, currently, we have a dozen full-time employees at our office. We've had as high as fifteen to sixteen over the last few years, but currently a dozen, about a hundred and seventy-eight years of work experience. You can see from the list that some of us are getting a little long in the tooth as far as being on the on the office. Greg Mog, who's been with us for almost thirty-one years, will be retiring in June. And so we're in the process of looking for another person to be hired to work in his area of expertise. But we have two grant writers, two project administrators on staff. We have three GIS persons on staff. We have three individuals that work in planning and zoning and policy development. And then we also have three individuals that work with our first district development company. That's a sister organization that works in the private sector, SBA five oh four certified development company where they make loans and co-op with banks on loans to private businesses for new and expanding businesses. As far as what we do, pretty well known for writing a lot of grant applications, a lot of loan applications for public improvement projects. If those projects get funded, then we help on the backend with the administration, planning and research. That's basically most of what my professional career has been in is policy development. Talked about our GIS and our revolving loan funds. We also help out with tax agreement financing. And then we're out there just keeping our our membership informed regarding the types of programs that are out there at the state and federal level. A lot of things we do that provide benefit, that's hard to attribute some sort of a cost or benefit out at that element to it. But in two thousand and twenty-two, the first district assisted their membership of the eleven counties and seventy-six towns in acquiring four hundred and nine million dollars in grant and loans for a variety of projects. Of those four hundred and nine million, almost a hundred and fifty million was just in grant dollars alone. Now granted, most of that is coming through the federal government with the American Rescue Plan Act. The state received close to a billion dollars in monies for water and sewer projects. And many of our communities took advantage of that. If you take the total grant dollars divided by dues paid into the organization last year, we had almost four hundred and ninety dollars for every dollar's worth of dues that came in. I've been working here for thirty years and have been the director for the last fifteen. In the last fifteen years, we have about two hundred and forty-one million in grant dollars that's coming to the district. Of that two forty-one, a hundred and forty-eight was just in this last year. So monies I don't expect to see again in my lifetime. I hope so from the perspective of my children and maybe grandchildren, somebody having to pay that money back. But it's all been being spent wisely, improving water and sewer systems primarily within the planning district here. When we take a look at Cottington County by itself, in two thousand and twenty-two, there's twenty-two point two million dollars in grants alone that are being pumped into Cottington County. That's a three hundred and seventy-one dollar return on every dollar's worth of dues that were paid in fiscal year twenty-two. You take a look at since the fifteen years that I've been at the helm, we've been averaging about forty-six dollars for every dollar's worth of dues, just in in grand dollars coming into the the community. Any questions just on on what it is that we do and that sort of a thing? I've also included just a two-page handout just for your own information that basically kind of lays out the different types of project areas that we have expertise in from planning and GIS and business development. And on the back, I also have just a list of all of the employees with the district and and then some contact information. So if you're ever looking, I mean, the good thing is you know where we live and we get phone calls and Troy was in our office yesterday for about an hour yesterday talking about things. I want to talk off of this sheet here that's got some yellow highlights.
And that is. Can I ask a quick, can I ask a question? Try to interrupt. On the, so appreciate all you guys do. I mean, I think you're a good deal. Planning districts are a really good deal for the counties. The twenty-two point two million dollars you mentioned, is that is that one year's worth of grant funding or is that over a period of time?
That was just last year's.
Okay.
Last year's was twenty-two million that was pumped into the district. I don't have that number. You could almost still roughly over the last fifteen years. I can't do the math in my head. It's probably Yeah, yeah, over the over just in the, just in Cottington County, we've been averaging about forty-six dollars worth of every dollar's worth of dues. So just to round that off, it's about thirty-five million dollars in dues and grants that have come in just to the district since two thousand and eight. About thirty-five million.
Okay, thanks.
Good question. And I, and I'll, I can get you that specific number offline there exactly. This sheet just here talks about things that we've been doing in Cottonton County just last year alone. As you're aware, we take care of all your GIS data. We work with your nine one one, the address society and the database information that the Wiretown Police Department does with their six county dispatch services. We take care of your parcel data. We web host your information. Y'all know Luke, he's here quite often talking to you about planning and zoning and we've been taking care of the county's planning and zoning administration since two thousand and four. I did that from two thousand and four to two thousand and eight and Luke's been doing it for the last fourteen years. Luke's always working with you on your zoning ordinance amendments. We assisted Rick with the highway bridge plan this last year, which makes you eligible to apply for highway bridge dollars. We assisted in the preparation of a hazardous materials plan. The PDM, as Andrew said, that was just approved yesterday. Peyton Sarda worked in our office over the last year on that. There was a a grant that was awarded for thirteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars to pay for that for that work and that PDM plan. We've done, you can see here that in Henry and South Shore, they received grant dollars to do water and sewer project. And then in Watertown, there's a lot of yellow on the list there where we've assisted in getting monies for improvements to the Wiretown Lions project. The Economic Development Administration, a little over a million dollars to do development work in the Calvin Industrial Park, south of the Walmart. And then between the utilities and the city of Wiretown, there's another twenty-odd million dollars that's going to be going into water and sewer development just within the city. So that just kind of gives you an idea of things that we did in the last year and we continue to do for our membership just in the county. And then the last handout sheet is basically list of projects that we've worked on since two thousand and eight. I'm just leaving that at your own leisure. And these are the things that, you know, there's a lot of things that we also do that's not in this list as well, but those are just what I'm going to call basic large projects. We've, we've appreciated the relationship that we've had since the inception of the district since nineteen seventy-one. We call this place home. Many of the people that most of the people, all but one of the people, I'm going to say this the right way, only one person that works in the district today is not from an area within probably an hour's worth of Watertown. So we draw people that have a relationship to the region. They stay, as you can see, in the, in the, you know, we have good length and longevity in our employees, which I think is a benefit to our organization and to our members as far as being able to to get that information out and available programs and progress towards different projects. And again, we've always appreciated your support and we look forward to another year of prosperity between both organizations. And if there's any questions, I'd be more than glad to take them.
Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Gable?
Thank you.
I guess I would just like to add. Yeah, that the return on investment for what Cottington County receives is incredible. And we, like I told you yesterday, Todd, we do appreciate our partnership with First District and and the work that you do. So.
Well, and it's much appreciated. Yep. And the county has budgeted for this year to continue your support and we appreciate everything that First District does. Well, thank you very much. And we look forward to you having a new seat on our board and Thank you. And Myron is also going to be on our exec, he's on the executive committee as well. He'll be on our executive committee as the secretary, I think, is your your title.
Ooh, get the pen, get the pen ready, Myron.
The good thing is Suzie takes all the notes, but we probably need to get in and get you to sign a check, check writing card. So we can sign the checks. That went through my, my mind immediately. She's going to be visiting somewhere. Thank you all so very, very much.
Todd Kayes from First Association District of Local Governments and it would cost us a lot more money if we had to if we didn't have that partnership with First District. So we appreciate that. We always value that. So thank you very much. Moving on, I see we have a monthly report from the sheriff. And he is not here yet.
He's not, he couldn't make it. He asked me to show his report. Let me pull that up.
Okay.
Should be able to see it. So I guess the thing we all focus on. A lot of calls, but fewer miles up at the top there. So fewer transport miles and then you can take a look at the you know, the average daily population in the jail. Going down a little bit. Twenty-four, seven, about the same. And then, oh, you can't see the numbers too too well on the the fees collected, but so yeah, Otakati contracts is still the the big thing there. So I don't have his balance sheet. He did want me to let you know, he, something came up on his schedule. And so for his annual report, he's going to wrap it all up next month.
Okay, any questions? Commissioner Gable on the sheriff's report. If not, we'll move on to item number eight, which is action to approve volunteer rosters for workers' compensation insurance. And you do have a list of those volunteers in your packet. Looks like we have several weather spotter volunteers, Cottington County Search and Rescue Team volunteers as well. This is something that we do annually as well as quite a few LEPC roster.
Can we approve them all in one shot?
Ah, yeah, you can.
So move.
Motion to approve by Johnson. Motion to approve by Johnson, second by Waterman. Any discussion on the volunteer list? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number eight is the action to adopt the annual LEPC roster that is also in your packet.
I should make a motion to approve.
Your roster um is strictly for workmen's comp purposes, where LEPC is not workmen's comp. It's just a roster that we were required to adopt.
Okay.
For the state.
And
So moved.
I'll second it.
I think we had a motion uh by Gable, and I'll take a second.
Second Mr. Gable's motion.
Second by Waterman. Any discussion on the LEPC roster?
Just, just one thing, just so people in case are looking at this, um, so we added uh Commissioner Schwer. So, um, Brenda Hampton's still there, but she's just not there as a commissioner, just so people understand that.
And I think there's a few others. I know I sit on that board, Lee, I don't know. You're not.
Yeah, as, as the nine-one-one guy from the city, and then when, when Commissioner Waterman was already on it, so.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Number ten, discussion possible action to update the Cottington County Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual. And we will ask our HR, County HR Director. Come forth, please. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. All right, we have several updates uh to the personnel manual today. Most of them as a result of union negotiations and changes um from last year, and then just a couple other items, so uh, Lee's got it up on the screen for you as well, and we'll try to walk through it. But first thing is just updating the table of contents, of course, as we update pages and making sure that people are referenced to the right spot. Um, if you wanna continue zooming along, Lee, page seven, I think we need to update the assignments. This you already did in a previous meeting, so we just want to make sure it's correct in the personnel manual as well. And I think I copied that from what you have, so I think it should all match up with what you had before. Let's just look correct to everyone.
It does, yeah.
Okay. Um, so then, if you want to go forward, um, I think the next update should be on page twenty-four, twenty-five-ish, something like that. This is an addition for a cell phone policy in the personnel manual. And this was actually is a request from um your treasurer, so there's been some updates and changes with credit cards, and it just came to her attention that we don't actually have a credit card policy. Um, if you want to take this as separate action or um separate motion, but I just thought maybe it would go in here with the other policies for the county. And this was um, yeah, basically what Carol sent over in her recommendation in language that she borrowed from other counties.
Yes, I guess, yeah, I would have, have an issue approving any of this if we can't read it.
Um, so I emailed it to you. I'm not sure, do we want to get, make copies? I didn't print, I guess.
I prefer written copy.
Okay, um, do you wanna come back to this item? Do you wanna continue on? I'll go make some copies?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If that works, take it up on the seventh of February, whatever.
Or wait.
Wait and maybe send it out? Well, I mean, let the board take it home with them and study it.
Yes.
Until the seventh?
That's fine.
Is that?
Yep.
We just wanna put that agenda for the seventh.
Yeah, well, let's finish going through it today, so you know what you're looking at when you get the copies in front of you, I guess, then.
Continue.
Um, so then the next page, um, Lee should be uniform allowance.
Can I just ask on the credit card policy, is it just that, just that, just to, we just didn't have that at all?
We didn't have anything at all.
Okay, just to establish a few parameters.
Yep, and so there's really nothing different um than what you've been doing. You just didn't have it documented.
Okay.
Natalie, I can start making those copies now if you're here.
Okay. Do they want the full manual with everything? So then?
Probably, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Do you wanna copy, Lee, printed? Or are you gonna look at it on email? So for that.
Okay, well, yeah, I already get the print, so.
You'll have one for your
You'll have an extra.
Since it's a new policy, I would like to have it in front of us.
Definitely. Okay, um, this next section then absenteeism and tardyism is the next part. And this was what we added for language in the union contract. Again, just making that match. This was what you already approved there. But yes, look it over when you get your copies. Uh, the next section is uniform allowance that there was a change to, and this was just outdated, apparently. Um, there was some old numbers in here that had been from probably several versions ago and just were not updated when the union contract is updated. Um, Cindy had indicated it was the intention that the sheriff and chief jailer would be paid those same amounts. They're not technically part of the union, but that has always been what they've received is what matches. So I just updated that language to match. Okay, um. Your next update is, I think, forty-seven-ish about, Lee. Um, supplemental retirement. Again, as we discussed, we made a addition to add another layer on here for the seventy-dollar threshold. And it looks like previously you didn't have the twenty listed, but that is in the union contract as well. So again, just trying to get consistency between our contracts and our personnel manual that applies to the rest of the employees. Uh, vacation leave and the next section, next page, maybe Lee should be, there you go. Again, we added another layer in here for union, so we're adding another layer, the regular policy. Um, scrolling down further, sick leave, same situation, just looking for consistency between these two contracts. Updating language to match. Uh, the next section, scroll down, termination of employment. As you remember, for again, union contract, we did add um retirement. We increased it to twenty percent and set a ten percent for sick leave payout on qualifying retirement. And then we also added the, if you retire not necessarily through South Dakota Retirement, but in good standing after ten years of service from the county, then you'd be eligible for the ten percent payout. So putting again that same language into the personnel manual for the rest of the employees. Trying to get all the policies consistent. Okay, um, if you scrolled on to like fifty-seven-ish, fifty-eight funeral leave, same situation. We added um some definition of significant other, you may recall, that needs to get into the personnel manual. And then scrolling down, personnel leave. This um is a union contract benefit that has been given to the county employees personally, but has never been listed in the personnel manual. So just adding this section with this benefit that the employees receive. And I think that is it. So, um, do you have any questions now? And then Cindy will print and get you copies, and we can add it for the next meeting.
Yep, that's fine.
Yeah.
Sound good, Lee? Anything right now?
Uh, no, it's, this is page seventy, it's this
Oh, yes, that's another change too. Yes, we did that um additional part-time step item that you approved last summer and just didn't get updated in the manual.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions, Commissioners? If not, we'll wait. We'll put it on the agenda for approval at our next commission meeting.
Perfect, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie.
Yes.
I see Commissioners, you did get that a little after seven o'clock this morning. She did email that out to you, so. You probably haven't had a chance to review that, yeah. All right, item number eleven, which is action to approve the annual wage sched- schedule. That is also in your packet for two thousand and twenty-three.
On this wage scale, it reflects the call-up that you approved previously this month. And it's been applied to each step and grade throughout this policy, and it's been uh Natalie prepared it, we checked it, and it's been reviewed a number of times for accuracy.
Okay. Action to approve that wage schedule.
I'll second it.
Move by Johnson, second by Schwer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, item number twelve is action to approve the claims for payment. Cindy?
Uh, these are the claims that normally come in towards the end of the month. The first one is um payable to the Watertown City Finance Office. And I believe Commissioner Van Nisant, Vice Chair Van Nisant will be recusing himself from voting on this.
Correct.
Um, so this is the November nine-one-one surcharge collections in the amount of twenty-three thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars and fifty-eight cents. And per a previous policy, the county pays this amount directly. We received it from the state of South Dakota, and then we pay it directly to the city of Watertown for nine-one-one uh services.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Johnson, second by Gable. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Right, and then the others are our credit card um charges that come through later in the month, and in order to avoid any finance charges, we approve these at the time. The first one is to First Interstate Bank. This is for travel and supplies for the Highway Department in the amount of four hundred and eighty-nine dollars and ninety cents. The second one is also payable to First Interstate Bank in the amount of one hundred and thirty-four dollars and it supplies for the egg building and license renewals for the weed department. And the final one is Moby Medical in the amount of one thousand two hundred and seven dollars and two cents. And that is the gold in cooler that you authorize the coroner to purchase.
And that was an item in his budget for this year.
And that was budgeted for, and it is still looking for a home, I believe.
Yeah. All right, any uh, have a motion to accept? Move by Gable, second?
I'll second it.
Second by Schwer. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number fourteen, action to approve personnel changes. Cindy?
Uh, yes, we have two, three personnel changes. The first one is Paige Welling. She will be a new hire, twenty hours per week at the welfare office as a community care coordinator. It's effective February first at grade twenty-five, step one, twenty-sixty-six per hour. The second one is Connor Anderson. He's been hired as a part-time official officer, no benefits, and this is just to sustain the pool of part-time people that we have for the corrections department. We've had a number that have um left recently. And the final is Eric Kozak. He has been hired as Highway Maintenance Tech Two, grade twenty-five, step one, twenty-sixty-six per hour at the Highway Department. Effective February first.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waterman's, uh, I'm sorry, motion by Johnson, second by Waterman. Any discussion?
Two out of the three, or actually all three of these are just bill natures.
Okay, I see that a couple of them aren't signed. I think it's not a big deal.
No.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get it when we
Okay. All right, any, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, did we skip thirteen or what?
There are no budget supplements today.
Very good.
Moving on to item number fifteen now, that's action to approve travel requests, and I think you have a couple of those.
Offer the weed and pest department to authorize uh personnel to attend the state weed and pest conference in Huron.
So moved.
Move by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Waterman. Discussion.
This is a requirement to have these people attend in order to qualify for grant.
That, that is correct, Cindy. We have to have these people here in line and, and otherwise are
We're not eligible for grant funding otherwise.
That's correct.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Waterman, Cindy. All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, number sixteen, public notices of a possible quorum of Commissioners that Commissioners could be at during the next, uh, well, probably, we're not gonna have a meeting next week, are we?
For previously adopted policies, you do not meet the fifth Tuesday of the month, which next Tuesday is, so February seventh is your next scheduled meeting.
Okay, so we're looking at about a two-week timeframe here, so is there any?
There is one, uh, there's a uh meeting that uh Corps of Engineers in the cities in reference to the uh flooding uh study that's gonna be held, I think it's the thirty-first of January out of the um Ram Quarter, I think it's the thirty-first, either the thirtieth or thirty-first, it's last day or
Be Tuesday, the thirty-first?
It could, we could have a forum out there. I know I will be there, and there probably should be some other ones there.
That gonna be at the same place, up at the Zoo Conference Room?
No, 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 at the Ram Quarter.
That's at the Ram
The Heritage, uh, the Heritage Theater there.
Heritage Theater, so the event center, all right. Okay, anything else that you get? Is there a where else?
GOP meeting next week, Wednesday, prob- usually, I, I don't, I haven't received the email yet, but just
Yeah.
Just for a little bit of a more information, Myron, is this a follow-up to this previous meeting that they had at the zoo?
Uh, no, no, this is in reference to um authorizing a uh, expenditure to study the uh uh, dwell on the flooding situation in Watertown. In other words, uh, what's gonna happen north of town, out in the county as far as uh, uh uh, flood control. This is a Corps of Engineers will be present.
The previous one was to go over the map of
Was the flooding. That was uh, they changed the map as far as if you're in a floodplain or not. And this, this really is a follow-up of that. This is different.
Okay, just, just to clarify, thank you.
Commissioner Gable, did you have something to add?
No, it just, it's a, it's been a, you know, before I was Commissioner, they were talking about this, you know, the engineer study, and then I know the city's been, you know, often talking about it, so, so it's a long, long-term discussion.
All right, nothing else. We'll move on to item number seventeen, old business. Anything for old business? Item number eighteen, new business. Item number nineteen, open public comments. I don't think we received any phone calls. Anybody have anything that you wanna share that's not on the agenda? Okay, uh, Commissioner comments?
Yeah, I'd uh have a need to go into executive session.
Okay, under what item?
I uh would have to do with the floor.
Okay. Uh. Not sure what item that would fall under.
That's exactly my thought. I didn't know what I would put that under.
I don't think that that qualifies for executive session. Is that?
It's a matter of security. You could go with
Contract?
No, not
Tender contract?
Yes.
Security, okay.
If it's a discussion on safety measures or security.
Okay, four.
Number four.
Okay, all right, so item number twenty is action to enter into executive session. We'll do that per South Dakota Codified Law one dash twenty-five dash two subsection four. And at this time, I'll take a motion to go into executive session.
I'll move.
Move by Randy Schwer, Commissioner Schwer.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Waterman. Any discussion?